Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the town of Wyndham Planning Board to order. My name is Dan Pasquarello, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. And Weeks, the Chair is not able to attend tonight. We have a continued public hearing on the agenda for the Cherry Street Audubon property. So that notice is on the petition, oh, before I get there, I should say this meeting is being conducted via the Zoom format. With respect to the public hearing, on the petition of Massachusetts Audubon Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary, eighty-seven Perkins Road, Topsfield, Mass. For site plan approval under sections two fifty-five dash six point three parking special requirements, non-residential and section two fifty-five point one, three point five site plan approval to allow for the construction of a seventeen car parking area at Cedar Pond Wildlife Sanctuary located on Cherry Street, Assessors Map seventeen, lot oh, one, three. And this hearing is being continued from July fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. In attendance tonight, in addition to myself on the board is Rick Woodland, David Anderson, and Peter Clay. So staff, Margaret Hoffman, Margaret. Anything we need to do before we continue the public hearing?
Nope, we just identified that the meeting's being recorded, but I think you're all set. I see Liz Stetson is here, I believe, for the applicant. So I'm not sure if Liz wants to present, I have their plans that they sent us today with with some of the revisions that we discussed at the last meeting. I can bring those up if you're ready to start, Dan.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Before we do that, let me just say that I was absent from last month's meeting. I have reviewed the July fourteen meeting and submitted a Mullen certification. I believe Rick Woodland has also submitted a Mullen certification for the first hearing on this matter before he was a member of the board. So with that, I think we have a quorum to proceed. So Margaret, if you want to give us an introduction, and then I guess we hear from Liz.
Yes, yeah, thank you. I'm going to share the screen which Liz had sent me today, the plans and see, I've got to find it. So Liz, I don't know if you want to take over and just let me know if you want me to scroll, scroll down.
Okay, great, thanks, Margaret. So I did, I think since not everybody was at the last meeting, I just did want to reiterate some of the changes that we had made from the first time we presented this, which included reducing the overall parking lot size from seventeen to twelve parking spaces. So that is what is reflected on this plan. We also reduced the overall size of the individual parking spaces as well as changing this, the parking surface from asphalt to crushed stone and adding some vegetative screening. So those were all changes that we shared at the last meeting, and that was a result of conversations with the surrounding neighbors and some of the concerns that we heard regarding the parking lots. We've, we've made some steps to be responsive to those concerns and hopefully still be able to offer, you know, safe and accessible parking at this location. Since we met last month, the only real changes that are shown here now are the additional vegetative screening on the west side of the property along the Bronson property line. So we're now proposing some vegetation there as well as on the Cherry Street side of the parking area. We, there had been at the last meeting, some discussion of the stone wall. And there's a small section of wall that we're proposing, kind of adjusting the location of and rebuilding. And we were able to confirm that that wall in its entirety is, is within our property, within the, within the right of way. I think that has been a question that came up at the last meeting. And there were some questions about the signage as well. So those are really the only changes on the plan, and we can again flip through this PDF. There's a little bit more detail about the proposed planting and signage.
And Liz, do you mean that the, the wall is within your property, not within the right of way?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So we're proposing two types of signs on the property, which follow kind of standard Mass Audubon format. The first that you see in the bottom right of this drawing is an entrance sign, just identifying the property and helping people to know where to go. And that is a two-sided sign in Spanish and English. And that's kind of standard Mass Audubon design. And then we have an orientation panel, which is shown on the left. And that's a little further in the property along the side of the driveway. And again, that follows kind of Mass Audubon standard format and includes a trail map, information about the types of trails that visitors can expect here. Condition of the trails and length and duration, so they know kind of exactly what they're, they're getting into before they head out on a trail. And that also includes on the left panel in English and Spanish, just some highlights of some of the natural features of the property. So that's sort of the standard format for our signage, and those are the two types of signs that we're proposing here. And those signs both were shared with Public Works, I believe. And I think the only questions on those were about methods of installation, and they do, they come mounted on posts which get ground mounted to a depth of about two to two and a half feet. And that's sort of our standard installation, and it seems to be very effective and, and long lasting. So that's what we plan to do here. Sorry, was there a question?
No, I, I was gonna say that I know that you submitted a planning list, I think, and it was sent to Win Mulry, who commented favorably on it, is that right, Margaret?
Yes, that's correct. And we did get an email from Win that he's satisfied with this planting list.
Great. So we, yeah, we had just selected kind of a mix of native shrubs, you know, there is a fair amount of vegetation on both so, those sides of the property. So we were looking for kind of native understory shrubs that would also support birds and wildlife, and we chose kind of a diversity of species to, to kind of create a sort of native shrub buffer on both sides. So that's what we're showing here. Go to the next slide. And then this just shows in a little bit more detail, the signs and sign dimensions. So that driveway sign is thirty by thirty-six wide plus, you know, a little bit of height for the mounting posts. And then same thing, the orientation panels are each thirty-six by forty-eight, and they get mounted kind of side by side. And that's just an example of, of kind of what those look like installed at, that are another sanctuary on the Cape. And then I think the last, just a couple of slides here are just some images of that existing stone wall that we're proposing repairing, which in this photo is the, the wall on the left, and it's really just the section that runs parallel to the driveway. You can see it's in pretty rough shape right now, maybe we could go to the next photo. There we go, yeah, you can see it's it's fairly well collapsed. So what we're proposing here is kind of moving it back about four feet and then rebuilding that wall using as much of that existing stone as we can. We may have to supplement with a little bit of additional stone, but the idea would be that the the look and construction of it matches the rest of the existing wall here, and we're, we're doing that so that we can widen this drive a bit to allow for safe two-way entrances and exits of vehicular traffic there. I think there's one more photo here on the last slide, yeah. So this is, I'm looking out towards Cherry Street. So you can see there's really not, not much of a wall left there, but we'd like to kind of restore and rebuild that. I think those are the extent of our updates from, from the last meeting.
All right, thank you, Liz. I know, and I know you spent a lot of time going over everything at the last meeting, I think it was in assessment on our. So unless you have anything else to present, I'm gonna throw it to the board to see if anybody has any questions. And feel free to either physically raise your hand or use the button. All right, seeing none. Do we have any members of the public, Margaret?
I see a Jean Lee, I'm not sure whether they are with the applicant or if they're of the public or have any comments.
Okay. So does anybody want to go to the virtual podium and offer any commentary on this request?
There's nothing in the chat box either.
Okay. Um. So we can either move right to deliberation, which I'm, I'm, I'm always, well, a little confused on the sequence of this, if we need to close the public hearing before we deliberate. I, I think not, well, you tell me, Margaret.
You, um, you can actually do either, you can, you know, make your motion, then close the hearing or close the hearing to comment and then discuss a bit and then make your motion. If you want to do it that way.
All right, well, seeing nothing further from the board or from the public or from the applicant. I think it would make sense to close the public hearing at this point. Can I get a motion from someone to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing of the Cedar Pond Recreation Proposal from the Mass Audubon.
Peter Clay's seconds.
All right, all those in favor? Pasquarello votes aye. Woodland?
Aye.
Clay?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing for this matter is closed. Any questions or deliberation from the board? All right, so seeing none. I think we should talk about a motion to for, for the special permits now. Margaret, is it, it's two special permits, is that correct?
Yes, there are two special permits, one is for the parking for the, the size of the parking spaces and for the gravel. And then the other one, the other special permit is for the signs. So I think the first one, I mean, I, Dan, if you want to read that, I think it captures what we're.
Yeah, okay, I have a, I have a draft that staff proposed, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through that. And if it's acceptable, we can make a motion on this and then vote. So with respect to the Audubon Cedar Pond Cherry Street Parking Area, the board has considered the following items under section thirteen point five for special permits during the hearing proceedings. It has found that the adverse impacts of the proposed plan as submitted and revised do not outweigh the beneficial impacts of the town and the neighbors. Specifically, the board finds the following. The community needs which are served by the proposal include benefits from the ability to access the Cedar Pond Sanctuary. And the proposed parking area will allow more of the community, the community to utilize the site. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, will not be adversely affected. The amount of spaces will allow for safe access to the site. The traffic will not be adversely impacted on Cherry Street. With respect to adequacy of utilities and other public services, no additional public services will be required. With respect to neighborhood character and social structures, the applicants have taken great care to communicate, work with the community and take into consideration the concerns and needs of the neighborhood. The project limits the cutting of trees, utilizes low-impact gravel surfaces, and will provide additional vegetative screening for the neighbors. With respect to impacts on the natural environment, the Audubon Society is sensitive to impacts on the natural environment. And their organization promotes the use of the land in a way that is sensitive to wildlife, especially on this property. They have proposed a parking area that is the least impactful on the site, but will still allow for additional use. With respect to potential fiscal and economic impact, including impact on town services, the tax base and employment, there are no obvious fiscal impacts to the community. The police department has been involved and do not expect any substantial impacts from the additional use of the site. With those founding, findings, I entertain a motion to approve the following special permits as requested by the Mass Audubon Society for the Cedar Pond Wildlife Sanctuary on Cherry Street. A special permit under section two fifty-five point six point three point G to allow for a reduction in the required parking space size to nine by eighteen feet and to allow for the use of gravel rather than required asphalt or concrete. Anybody like to make a motion on that special permit?
I'll make that motion.
So Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Peter Clay's seconds.
Okay, all those in favor? Pasquarello votes aye. Mr. Woodland?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, with, the motion passes. With respect to the special permit for permanent signs as requested under section two five five point seven point two point three to allow for a permanent non-resident residential signs of seven and a half square feet. Entertain a motion on that special permit.
I so moved.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Second, Pasquarello votes aye, Mr. Woodland?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, that's, the permit is approved.
Dan, excuse me?
I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot to, let me go back and amend the make an, an amendment to the motions that there are two conditions.
Dan, if I could just, on the sign one, the, the residential sign of seven and a half, the non-residential sign of seven and a half feet is, is just for one sign. I realize there's one other sign that the interior signs are a bit bigger. So let me just see which ones. So the seven and a half wood sign is the one on the street. These ones are thirty-six by forty-eight. I have to get my calculator to determine the square footage, but so that the, you could amend that motion for additional signs of, of greater size.
Okay, so that would be twelve square feet.
Is it, okay, twelve. Okay, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
There.
Well, let me, let me make, I'm sorry, let, let me make a, a general amendment that what I think we left out from that motion for approval of the special permit was that it will be carried out in accordance with the plans that have been submitted. And that there are a few conditions that we want to attach. So the amendment would include that the applicant will utilize the existing stones to the extent possible when relocating the stone wall as shown on the plans, and will utilize similar stones if needed, if, and the existing stones are insufficient. And second, that the applicant will install the vegetative screening as shown on the approved plan in accordance with specific requirements for the approved plantings list. So I guess we can add to that amendment that for the signed special permit, that it can be up to twelve square feet.
I just wanted to note that these are, would be twelve each, twelve square feet each of these two panels.
Yep. I, I, I think that, I think that's fine. Do we need to to modify it further? I don't think anybody has an issue with the signs.
No, I, I think it was just, it said, it's, it's fine to just say as shown on the approved plans.
And as proposed, is that sufficient? Okay. All right, Catherine, were you able to get all of that? And I think we need an amended omnibus motion here.
You should do an amended motion, and I'm assuming you will send me your notes on that reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do that.
I have your motions.
Okay. So why don't I make the motion then? I move that we approve both special permits with the following conditions, that the applicant will utilize the existing stones when relocating the stone wall as shown on the plans to the greatest extent possible. And will utilize similar stones if new stones are required. And second, the applicant will install vegetative screening as shown on the approved plans in accordance with the specific requirements for the approved plantings list. Third, that the special permits be allowed for the signs in the size proposed in the plans by the applicant. And that the special permits are approved with the understanding that would be carried out in accordance with the plans submitted.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Okay. Pasquarello votes aye. Mr. Woodland?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, and I think we have one more issue on this, which is site plan approval. Is that correct, Margaret?
Uh, yes, they also applied for site plan, site plan approval under thirteen point five point G for a parking lot. They, this really, I think, might qualify as a minor site plan approval. Some of our requirements for site plan approval are geared towards construction of buildings. So a lot of that didn't qualify.
So I'll make a motion that we grant site plan approval under section two fifty-five point thirteen point five point three for the construction of a parking area at the Mass Audubon Society Cedar Pond Wildlife Sanctuary on Cherry Street as shown on the approved plans.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Pasquarello votes aye. Mr. Woodland?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Ms. Stetson, thank you very much for your attendance and cooperation, and good luck with the project.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, can't wait to be there and enjoy it, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, I'll be in touch with you once the decision is drafted and signed. And I'll let you know when that's, when that's ready.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Margaret, can you send the um, motion notes to Catherine, please? Okay. The next thing on the agenda is discussion of possible zoning amendments.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Dan, I'd like to discuss that with the board.
Okay.
So as you know, I had sent you all an email thinking that we may try to get a few minor zoning amendments on to this October town meeting. Once we realized the timeframe to get those on, we the zoning enforcement officer, myself, sort of agreed that they're not imperative that they get done right away. They were very minor in nature and more of just things that we felt would make our job a little bit easier, you know, a couple of definitions that we thought were missing. So I'm gonna ask the board that we don't take that up at this time, that we wait until we have more of the zoning regulation, regulations ready to revise.
Not even the definition of a kennel? You don't want to go back to that one? All right, then.
The definition of a chicken, we're not gonna divide a chicken either.
I'm just flashing back two or three years to our marathon definition session. Okay, um. Next bullet point is the discussion on master plan progress.
Yep, and if you don't mind, I can update you a little bit. So the Master Plan Advisory Committee met and had their first official meeting. They voted Joanne Frisella and as chairperson and Deidre Parati as vice chair. The committee has started working, looking at the, the website that's been the draft website and looking for input from the community. The consultants have started interviews, they are putting together their report from their focus groups and their interviews. So those will be ready for the next Master Plan Advisory Committee, which is meeting on the twenty-fourth of August. Joanne Frisella has been involved in the couple of the bi-week, well, the first bi-weekly check-in meeting that I have with the consultant, so that's been great. Joanne's been very active and in, in participating. So, yeah, they're moving forward, they seem to be on track. They're talking about a community forum taking place on October sixth. We're hoping that community forum will be in person, we think it will be. I'm gonna try to get the library, the large room at the library, which accommodates a good amount of people, and they'll give us space. And they're talking about maybe having an open house format so that people can come in whenever they want. Master Plan Advisory Committee members will be there, being able to discuss the different aspects of the plan and getting input from the community at that time. They have also, they're proposing a really robust plan to reach out to the community, some, you know, with different media will use flyers, a lot of things like that. So they'll be presenting that to the Master Plan Advisory Committee on the twenty-fourth.
All right, great. A question. I know we discussed having a couple of members from our board be on the committee or attend the committee, or can we, is there any open meeting issue if we wanted to sit in on any of these meetings?
It doesn't seem that there is an issue if you're sitting in, if more than three, or three or more of the planning board members show up and, you know, start, try to start to vote or deliberate or anything, that would cause a problem. But it's okay for you to be there.
Okay.
But we will coordinate, though, who, who will be going to that meeting if anybody wants and can make it.
So we should coordinate through you, is that?
Yeah, I think it's probably best to coordinate through me, just in case if you do, if several of you want to go, I can post it as a planning board meeting, just won't do that much there.
Um. I believe, I think we're down to just the board, Margaret and Catherine. So before we go to meeting minutes, I'm gonna jump to other matters, this may not have been reasonably anticipated by the Chair. I think, Margaret, you have something to share?
I do have something to share. I don't know, some of you may already be aware of this, but there was a press release issued today from Gordon College explaining that they are in the process of selling seventy-five acres of their property to Pulte Homes. Pulte Homes is a residential developer. They, they did come in and speak to us yesterday, very briefly showed us a preliminary set of plans that they're anticipating building three hundred and seventy-five units of housing for fifty-five and over community. It's in the preliminary stages, but we want, I wanted this board to be aware of it. If they do submit an application, it will be to this board, and it will be under our independent living overlay district regulations. So as the planning board, you might want us to read through those, because that's going to be your challenge to issue the permit if it comes to us.
You repeat that section, please?
Yes, it's section twelve point five. Twelve point five, independent living overlay district. I personally, we've never implemented this section of the bylaw. Not even sure right where it came from, but I did talk to a few people, and it seemed like at one time in Wyndham, there was a large senior community being proposed, I think on the, where Penguin Hall is. And that may have been the town's wave, you know, creating a zoning for something like that. So this is a big project they're proposing. It's, it's in an area that's over near Gordon College, just if you're heading out of Wyndham from on Grapevine Road, it's just before that big parking lot, their first parking lot on the left, the Woodland, I think called Woodland Parking Lot. So they're proposing a roadway out to the land in the back. There's plenty of questions, there's, there's no application before us yet, but we wanted to get a little bit of ahead of this because Gordon College has issued their press release today, and the town is going to also issue one.
So is this between Iron Rail and before you get to the parking lot?
Rubbley Road, you know where Rubbley Road is?
Yep.
After, right between Iron Rail. Yes, there's some properties that stretch down, it's, you'd have to go past Gusset and across from their La Vida camp right there, so it's on the other side of the street.
So Dan, if you drive into the Woodland parking area
Yep.
for Gordo, you can go to the back left corner. There's gonna be an entrance into this from Woodlong, but the main entrance is gonna run along the west side of Woodlong Parking. the west side of Woodlawn Parking. And then it goes back and um, there's a, a pretty good sized space there where they're gonna put these uh, three hundred and seventy whatever units, and I was poking around there this afternoon. Um, a couple of things, I think it's gonna be very hard to see it from Grapevine. Um, one, two, um, at least they're talking a good game about um, trying to keep the trails there, but it basically um, backs up to uh, Chabaco Woods and you know how excited people in Hamilton were about that. But it's really, it it's sort of kind of like the Maples, it's kind of like at the end, end of our community, it's almost in Manchester, it's partly in Hamilton and um, you know, I asked uh, the developer, you know, ballpark uh, estimate on incremental tax revenue and he was talking in the range of like three million bucks. So I, I, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but the other thing is, because it's an older community, what that means is, and this is why it's like the Maples, they're not gonna be a lot of kids being brought in that have to go to school.
You're talking about Maples, are you talking about the Maples or Maple Woods, two different projects with the same title?
Uh, the one down in your neck of the woods.
That would be Maple Woods, I like to keep them separate because they are different constituencies too, so.
Right.
Isn't the Maples the one near the golf course?
Yes.
Yeah, the Maples is.
That's a cooperative, that's a cooperative development, uh, so it's different than rental units, so wanna keep them clear.
So, Margaret, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, um, but i- is there already an overlay district or is this, there's just a potential to cite an overlay district?
We already have an overlay district. Yeah, our, our regulation has already created that many years ago before I got here, so we have that overlay district.
I assume that this area is within it?
Yes, yeah, well, it qualifies, it's a number of acres that qualifies it.
So it can be anywhere, but it, it's by acreage?
Yes.
Dave has his hand up. Dave, you can just talk, you know, if you turn your microphone on.
I know, but on Zoom, plus I got way the woodpecker on here for the kids. Exactly, exactly. I have a couple of things, one, is it gonna be strictly in Wyndham or is it gonna be in Hamilton as well?
Yeah, they're showing it strictly in Wyndham on the Gordon College property.
That's, that's not a lot of space as the, I don't know if you've all looked at the map, but there's not a lot of space there.
They're buying, they're buying seventy-five acres.
Well, I'll be curious to see what the plot plan looks like, because there's a lot of swamp land there in the limited space back there.
Can somebody do a map up?
Yeah, let me bring that up, hold on. They sent me something today and I didn't have a chance to go through it all. But let me.
Also, do we know this developer, the name's familiar, has they, have they done something else?
Not in Wyndham, but they've done developments everywhere in Massachusetts.
They're one of the nation's largest home builders.
They are.
Is it P O U L I?
No, Pulte.
U L T E.
Yep.
That's it.
And the, and the press release, Margaret, do they talk anything about um, unit price at all, is this gonna be a middle class, another million dollar unit?
No, they're talking about, you know, kind of average pricing, five hundred-ish there, but they're, they're actually proposing one bedroom, two bedroom and some three bedroom. The one and two bedroom will be in um, garden style, four-story buildings, actually, you know what, I have this up, let me see, this did, this did come up, all right, I can show this to you, again, it's very preliminary and it's, you know, not um, it's, it, it is being discussed out there in the world, so let me see if I can share this, okay, I'm gonna stop that and share this.
Well, if the pricing stays relative to that, um, it, it, that's a good opportunity for our neighborhoods.
Yeah, can you see this?
Yes.
Can see it all right?
From working with the Affordable Housing Trust in Gordon College, uh, the Gordon College is on the Beverly sewer system, so part of David, your concerns about wetlands and stuff, septic, uh, i- if the school allows them to hook up and Beverly allows them to hook up to their sewer system, that becomes a mitigated problem.
Yep, all of those.
And water.
Yeah, their water, their sewer, all have to be determined and, and Pulte knows that, they're, they're um, aware of that. The, the next phase steps, I think, for the community is, or for the town is to have a meeting with them um, with some of the, the board heads, that, you know, committee heads and the uh, chair the department heads to, you know, look at this, whatever our thoughts, concerns and, before they apply to the planning board.
I think you're right, Peter, though, it's gonna be hard to see that.
Yeah, if you can see where here's Grapevine, uh, you can see that along here.
So where, where used, where the word Grapevine is, that's like where you can actually see back. But, but I think that the, the little bulge on the left-hand side of the, of the street and then the trees, um, I think hopefully will, will hide that. Cause you do know that the woodland uh, parking lot is actually, you can't see that, I mean, it's, it's, it's on a hill.
Elevated.
Um, you know, again, this is preliminary, these wetlands have not been delineated, this plan they're showing us is just a concept idea. Um, but it's something that we will have to pay attention to. But again, this board will be asked, I think, if the time comes for an application, they'll be asked to uh, apply under this independent living overlay district.
All right, well, certainly interesting, um, by the way, uh, Anne left me a message, um, and asked if we could get up, I don't think we need updates tonight, but at our next meeting on the, a couple of subdivisions in town, the Wyndham Pines and whatever is over on Grover Street, I'm blanking on the name.
Spring Hill.
Spring Hill, thank you.
You don't drive by it every day, right?
No, and, um.
Yeah.
Not sure what her comment was about the drought, but I think she wants to talk about water at some point, but um, this is a la, well, this is another piece of uh, news that may be interesting, there was a report, I saw on the Salem News today, there was a report in Hamilton about potentially combining the water systems of five or six towns, Hamilton, Wyndham, Topsfield, Essex, Manchester. I don't know, I, they had a grant to release the report.
Yeah, we, we've, um, our water department superintendent has been involved in those discussions. Um, it's, I think the, there's a name for it, I keep, it's like the North Shore um, Water Resources Group.
Yeah, it has something to do with the Ipswich River.
Yeah, it's Ipswich River. Uh, Rick, are you part of that? Have you been involved in those?
No, I'm not, but I, I've heard that group is pretty active and trying to find some water solutions.
Yeah.
Well, Bruce Tar, Bruce Tar's sponsoring it, I think.
Yeah.
I was at the climate change um, focus group, Ernst Asher was there and uh, that was a hot group, man, let me tell you, I learned a lot. Including why I can't shake my fist at Beverly anymore when they water their lawns incessantly. Because they tank their water throughout the year and we're just too cheap to pay for that infrastructure. And their thing was the juice isn't gonna be worth the squeeze on the pooling.
It's not that simple, David, but yeah, I get it.
I, app- apparently it is, I mean, well, who am I to argue, I don't, I, I still shake my fist at them, but.
You should keep shaking their fist because it's a regional problem and uh, they're gonna find out this year that they're gonna take more water out of places like the Wyndham Lake and the other reservoirs, but this fall, if the water doesn't come back, they're not gonna be able to pump out, so their problem's gonna be a year behind us. So there are a lot of reasons for regional water use restrictions beyond just they have their own reservoirs.
Stay it, man, I'll be at the street corner with you, I mean, people in Beverly are watering their sidewalks, I'm like, what are you doing?
What are you doing?
Apparently, they're also our backup, sorry, I'm getting a little far afield, it was a great session, the water question is fascinating.
No, I've been on this water thing with the water board for a decade and, and.
All right, I didn't mean to bring up a hot topic, let's move on to meeting minutes so we can wrap this meeting up.
But do we have other things not talked about at the right time, so I do have a plug?
Are there any other matters not reasonably anticipated, Rick, what would you like to share?
Yes, uh, at the recent select board meeting, I did uh, I did announce as a private citizen at the beginning of the meeting during their uh, open mic night time uh, that uh, they are working on the spending, uh, dispersment of the ARPA funds and, and, and in the last select board meeting before that, it was gonna be done by email with department heads and I don't know if Anne had been contacted, I know I haven't been contacted through her as a board member of the planning board. They've not officially had a connection with FinCom or other boards in town that may want uh, some input on how those ARPA funds are spent based on several of the other departments already having their short and long-term plans in place, so just wanted to get that in the record, that we should be looking, see how we could help the select board uh, carefully adjudicate those funds.
I nominate Peter to be the liaison between the planning board and the select board.
I, I'd like to nominate myself, actually.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to do that.
All right, I'm kidding, um, any other, any, any other matters?
No, not me. Oh, um, the, I just want to bring up one thing, the um, decision for uh, the Audubon, I'm hoping we can do electronic signatures, because we, you know, did um, vote on that, right, this board?
We did.
Electronic signatures, yeah, so um, we should be able to do those, so we'll stay tuned for that.
So I missed that part of um, last month during.
So the um, the, the state allows for electronic signatures on certain documents, uh, we just had to vote.
I just have one question, do we need any kind of software or is it just like slash, S slash, type your name?
We have, we have the software.
Okay.
The town has the software, the finance department's been using it for some time, we just didn't jump on board, so we finally uh, have, so I'll, I am learning to use that software and you guys should be able to use it very easily.
So this should be just in time for us to go back to live meetings.
I have one more question.
I won't be in the building by, by myself at night.
I have one question, Margaret, it might be in your area, I don't know, now, since we approved the Cedar Pond thing, it's back to Cedar Pond, we approved Cedar Pond tonight, do we then issue a press release to let people know that we've done this, or is that up to the applicant?
No, we don't issue any press releases or anything like that, um, no, we, we draft the decision, the board then signs it, I, I'll draft the decision based on all of your comments and the motion itself and then I let you know when it's ready and then the board signs it. It goes to the town clerk for a twenty-day appeal period and that's it.
Okay, guess, I, I haven't been through one of these before, so I'm just kinda finding out what that process is, okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, meeting minutes, what do we have?
So we have, um.
The ones I looked at, I had no change, no changes to.
Yeah. Let me see, I've got May twenty-sixth, Catherine, I think that's one that we needed, right?
Yes, May twenty-sixth, June nine and July fourteen.
Which uh, you all had, should have had for a bit. Let me see what other ones I've got. May twenty-sixth, yep, June nine, I can do a share. Share screen thing, it keeps disappearing on me. Okay, so here's May twenty-sixth. You see those? May twenty-sixth?
Yep.
So Catherine or Margaret, sorry, um, the question is, does anybody have any changes?
Right, so uh, Kevin, did I have any edits on May?
I did not find any emails that suggested you had any edits.
Um, did you send one, Dan, do you recall sending it?
I don't. So what was it, May twenty-sixth, was the?
Yeah.
Um, I had, I had edits to the May nineteen minutes, but we've, those have already been approved?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have any changes. I get a motion to, did anybody have any changes or are they just ready to go?
I had no changes on all three.
Same here, same here, I, I had none.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minute meetings as written for the dates of, I'm trying to find my dates.
Just go with May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth, yeah.
All right, second?
Peter Clay seconds.
Pasquale votes I, Mr. Woodland.
Yes.
Mr. Clay.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
I, I hope nobody's offended by the order, I'm just going by Zoom screen here, um, so what's the next date?
Uh, the next date, I believe, is June ninth. Let me just grab that one.
Did you send these or are they just on Google now?
Uh, I sent you the links in Google Docs.
And attach, I saw attachments too.
Yeah, and I did, I think at one point I attached them to, to an email. I think you, you had it.
I have no changes to this set of minutes.
I have no changes.
I just, I'm not sure, can you minimize, can you shrink that a little so I can?
Yeah, yeah. Can you see that?
It's still kind of big.
Hasn't changed, Margaret.
Huh?
It hasn't changed in size.
Oh, hold on, wait a minute. Hold on. Uh, what about that?
Nothing's changed.
It's changing on mine, so let me get a view. Zoom. Anything now?
Nope.
I don't, I don't know, it's I, I changed it in size.
Okay. Um, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I moved that we approved the meetings of the June ninth, twenty-twenty-two planning board meeting.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's the wrong one.
All right, sorry, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second, okay. Um, I, Mr. Woodland.
Uh, yes, hi.
Mr. Clay.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
All right, approved, last set is July fourteenth, I abstained because I was not at the meeting.
I had no changes to this.
Me neither, I make a, Rick, any change?
No.
I make a motion to approve the uh, meetings of July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two as drafted.
Peter Clay seconds.
All right, Mr. Woodland.
Yes, please.
Mr. Clay.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
And I abstained. All right, that's the end of the minutes. I think that's the end of the meeting.
Woo.
Under an hour.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I don't know if this is permissible advice now, but I see you also infrequently, I'm just curious, because I've never confronted this section twelve point five. Can we talk about that, like, not necessarily in, I, just like two minutes, I'm just very curious about it. Is that permissible, or should I do that offline with Margaret?
No, no, we can, we're still in open meeting and it's a matter that was not reasonably anticipated, we can talk about it, um, so I think what would make sense is, let's pull up the section of the bylaw.
Okay. Let me, uh, give me one second.
I'll go get my book.
I'll get your books, if you have them, um. Okay.
I can actually share if you want, I have it up.
Do you have it up?
While we're doing that, can I just ask what the next meeting date and time is so we're prepared for our motion to adjourn?
Yes, the next meeting date will be Thursday, September eighth at seven.
And do we know format yet? Do we know if we're?
It's Zoom until March.
It's Zoom until next March?
Yep.
Does that mean it's an option for Zoom or that we have to Zoom?
It's an option for Zoom and I think we have a room at the town hall, Peter. You might know better than I, that we could do a hybrid meeting.
Uh they're talking about getting the equipment for hybrid. Uh so if, if that does happen, there'll, there'll need to be some training and, and staff, staffing for that, um, the equipment.
But Margaret, just so Baker did say that theoretically, we were supposed to stay in Zoom meetings through March of next year. That's what he said. That's what he signed.
I don't think we have to stay in them, Peter. I think we can, that, that you can still use them, but you don't have to. From what we've been told.
So that's very unclear to me and.
But Baker's not even gonna be in office through next March, okay?
It's, it, yeah, I hear you.
Cause I, I've been attending live meetings in other communities. Um and they're, they're not hybrid, they're just regular old meetings, so. Yeah. Um
So what do we done? What, why are we talking about twelve point five or whatever?
Yeah, so David, do you have any specific questions or?
Yeah, I just had a couple. So it looks like it's a very interesting section. Does it supersede the subdivision rules and regs or does it act in concert with it?
There is some provision in this regulation that only requires that a roadway be built to subdivision standards if, if a roadway is proposed. But these are not the same as subdivision. This is a, a special permit for a particular type of project.
Okay, and it looks like it's a totally discretionary permit. And it's not by right by any means.
No, not by any means.
So
discretionary to the planning board.
I, I'm very interested by this because if they, I mean, they're basically I mean, maybe the purchase is contingent on the approval of the permit. I don't know, but
Yeah, um you know, I'm actually, I'm gonna have to stop you. If it's all right for the board to discuss in general, the independent living overlay district, but I would not recommend that you discuss of that specific project.
Got, got.
Only because they have not um sent in any application yet, which is, it's all right, but we don't wanna get ahead of ourselves on it in case they do.
Okay.
And I'm certainly willing to have you come by or you and I can talk on a Zoom call with your specific questions, but if you just wanna talk in general terms about this uh section of the bylaw, that's fine.
All right, so on that note, thank you for the news, Margaret. I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn the meeting until September eighth at seven PM. Um with the location to be provided in the um notice of meeting.
Peter Clay seconds.
All those in favor, I vote aye. Mr. Clay.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Woodland.
Yes, I.
All right, a combination of yeses and ayes means the motion carries. Everybody, good night.
Good night, thank you.